I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And also make that mention.
I'll second.
state your name.
I, Kristen Rindt, do solemnly and conciliably affirm, use solemnly and sincerely affirm, that I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authority.
And authorities.
Which are or may be.
Which are or may be.
Established for the government thereof.
Established for the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of said state.
Of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my authentic tax collector.
Of my office as tax collector.
That I will not allow my actions.
That I will not allow my actions.
As tax collector.
As tax collector.
To be influenced by personal or political friendships.
To be influenced by personal or political friendships.
Or obligations.
Or obligations.
On my personal honor.
On my personal honor.
Welcome aboard. All right, while she's getting seated, council comments, anybody got anything? I got one quick thing, I've noticed it's in front of like the cavalry church and all, they ain't picking that brush up. Do we have a good reason for why? I got an idea why, but not a good reason why.
I do not know the specifics for that situation, I will say generally speaking, if it's in the right of way is still viable for pickup. If they've already gone through your area though, I think this is a good reminder that you can actually go through the Henderson County website. And under the emergency storm debris page, you could actually put your name on the list to say that you need to go through it again. Again, I can't speak specifically on that, but they are able to put their name forward if it's in the right of way.
Yeah, I was told in the past that if the monitor that rides along with them. Determines that that brush wouldn't initiate it at that site, they wasn't going to pick it up. But I hope that they understand that that church was cleaning people's driveways and stuff out early on. This has been here since the get-go, since you know, as soon as they started getting it out there. So if anyone knows anybody at Cavalry, if they'll get them to go ahead and push it through, through the email process. And get somebody to come out and look again and see if they can get that picked up. If not, it's going to have every bit of their grass dead alongside the 280 right there. And you know, they tried to do good, I thought, by doing that.
Mr. Mayor, what we can do is I can follow up with the county as well, just to see if there's any more information we can gather.
That would be awesome too. Anyone got anything else?
Is that right beside the fire department?
Yeah, to back my way, yes. Anything else? All right, well, major updates.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council, I do have a few items for you today. First, there are upcoming Unified Development Ordinance public forums that are going to be provided here at Town Hall. As a reminder, through this work, public engagement is critical for the success of that project. And so because of that, making sure that we get public input on the Imagine Mills River UDO project is, we're trying to find multiple ways in order to engage the community. There are two opportunities right now, which will be Tuesday, February 25th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And then Wednesday, February 26th from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m., both in this room. There's more information obviously online as well at the website, which is imaginemillriver.com. So I recommend anyone in the audience or anyone listening at home to go visit that website as well, has the full list of what's going on, project scope, et cetera. We received word earlier that there is a planned water shutdown, that it'll be coming along Haywood Road here. Which will include areas off of Blue Heron Drive as well as River Oak Circle. That is going to be on February 18th from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And that's going to be a water outage, this is what we've heard from Hendersonville Water, they are doing a planned repair on pipes and systems within this area. So again, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., our understanding is that's going to be an actual full water outage. Once they're done with that repair, it's going to then move into what they call a system pressure advisory, which is essentially that boil water notice. So when they test their water, they have to go through a couple of cycles to make sure that there's no bacteria or any other elements that may be of concern within the water. So there's a precautionary element of boil water that'll be immediately after that. So that means again, the area around here, everyone in the affected area should have received either an email or a text message from Hendersonville Water. We're going to do our due diligence on our side to make sure we push it out via our social media and other channels. But I would highly recommend again, going to the Hendersonville, North Carolina website and go to their water department to make sure there's more updates there. For Town Hall and Town Hall purposes, I'm currently in the process of putting together a contingency plan on what that looks like, because that'll affect Town Hall. The library as well as our park services that day as well. So as we continue to roll out what that looks like, we're going to be pushing that out via our social media channels as well. The next item on the list that I have is, on February 1st, is our normal process. We pushed out delinquent letters regarding tax payments. So those were pushed out to those entities and those properties that were in delinquency. And from my understanding is that people are responding and they're coming in and we're still collecting taxes from last year and we're going to continue working through that process. Last, but certainly not least, because I feel like I may get an elbow to the side here if I don't remind, if I don't say this out loud. Is that if council could stay afterwards, we're going to do an updated photo at the end of the meeting. All right, that was the most important update.
Okay, all right.
Thank you all.
Okay, call for public comment, anyone here have any public comment? If you got it about the NFIP, we'll have a little space in there for you to get it in at that point in time, but if you just want to talk about the weather. Whatever you want to talk about now, it's time to do that, we'll give you three minutes. Come on up, Jenny.
Hey y'all, Jenny Sealy, 94 Claris Trail. My personal liability for my business renews at the beginning of the year. It went up 54% with the explanation of it being due to natural disaster. So I know that we are talking about flood insurance as well, and that's another part. But you know, this is going to affect like literally all of us, whether we're a business owner, whether we're homeowners, renters, and possibly even car insurance, I don't know. That happens in July for me, that turnover. So you know, I just wanted to kind of make everybody aware, at least of my circumstance, that you know, we've got a little bit more of a financial dig coming. Due to the actual hurricane. And that if anybody has any really good insurance that is not raising their rates, please let everybody know. So that they can get a little bit more business from Mills River.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Anyone else, public comment, anyone else? Hear none? Approval consent agenda motion, someone please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Sandra, a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Brian. Any discussion on this consent agenda before we move on? Hear none, all in favor? Any opposed? Hear none? Okay, regular agenda, discussion of the NFIP and the impacts on session law 2024-57.
And so as Mr. Malacheck and Ms. Alexander come up to the table here, just as a reminder, this is in relation to both of those items. So we thought that there are questions around both of them, how they work and related to each other. And so we figured this may be the best approach for answering the questions that yourselves and the public have asked. So at that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Malacheck and Ms. Alexander.
I'm going to defer to Ms. Alexander to begin talking about session law 2457 and impacts for that. You've got a couple of slides you all have seen already, basically talking about. You've got a couple of slides you all have seen already, um, basically talking about the down zoning provision in that law, um, that's concerning to the town. Uh, but I'll turn it over to Ms. Alexander.
Thank you. Um, I think, and, and you guys interrupt me, redirect me, don't, if I'm going in in order that doesn't make sense to you, but I think because both of those were, I saw those on the agenda together, I'm gonna start with how the down zoning impacts your ability to impose a floodplain work.
Okay.
Um, and there's lots of commentary out there. There's, there's very little law that guides you. I will tell you that, uh, the, that, that, well, it's N C G S one sixty D dash six oh one, which is where that is codified, where this session's law is codified. And what it says is, it says it prohibits zoning regulations or zoning map. And then it, it, then that contained down zoning, then it defines down zoning by starting out with saying a zoning ordinance. Um, it doesn't talk about a land regulation or it doesn't, you know, so that you have that. Then you have the fact that the, um, authority that you have to enact the, uh, uh, floodplain ordinance is contained in a different, it's in one sixty D, but it's in a completely different area. A lot of statutes used to attribute the, the source of, of the power for that for you all, and, and this one doesn't. But there, there are those, I guess that separation between floodplain and, um, and, and zoning. Um, unfortunately, in one sixty D dash six oh one, or nowhere in that article, does it define what they mean by zoning ordinance or by zoning regulations or zoning map. Um, and so there's, there's some really good faith argument, I think a strong argument, that a floodplain ordinance can be imposed and, and that is not prohibited, that is not considered down zoning. There's a lot of other ways that the town has to, to regulate what happens on property that might not be zoning, might, might be police powers, it might be, you know, public health. That I think are a lot closer to being called really zoning, really just you're using that to do it. So it, it's really, it's, it's really a tricky si- um, area. But I, I, it, it would be my opinion that it would be worth at least exploring disregarding one sixty D dash six oh one, and just if you wanted to, to adopt a floodplain ordinance, just assume that prohibition proceeding is that that prohibition doesn't apply to you. Um, while I'm talking about the down zoning, um, I know you guys have gotten a lot of information about that. It is what it says it is, the, the act is up there on, on the monitor. I, I thought, I don't know how much you've talked about what happens if we violate that. What happens if we decrease the density of land? What happens if we create a non-conformity on commercial property? Well, you would be acting in excess of your authority because obviously all your authority comes from the General Assembly and they have, they have imposed this restriction on your authority. And when you act as a government in excess of your authority, it's just considered absolutely void. So it's as if you didn't do. And, um, there aren't, the, 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 all the ultra, it's called ultra varies. And all those cases throughout history have dealt with primarily with contract situation. And, and the, the, the holdings have been, you are not a stop. So you can enter into a contract absolutely knowing that you don't have any authority to do it. The other party can give you all the benefit of that contract, can fully perform that contract and then ask for payment. And you can say, sorry, we can't pay you. We didn't have the authority to do that. And the court's gonna fold for you. So if you try to analogize to the zoning area, if you enact an ordinance, if you downzone property, if you're U D O, you just go ahead and do what you were planning to do before December. And, um, and you do that, then what, what would happen? So somebody could say, somebody could, could, could sue you and, and get an injunction from you enforcing that against their property. They could get damages. They could say, you know, you've done this and it's, it's essentially decreased the value of my land. You know, restricted the value of my land. And, and of course, that could be, that could possibly be, um, pretty high damages for somebody. And, um, I guess that's, I mean, I, I was trying to see what the other damages are. Just obviously the P R is what I was. So, um, I guess at this point, I'd kinda like to see if you guys have any particular concerns and see if Mike has anything he wants to say about one sixty D dash six oh one. Will we talk more about the flood?
I think I've set my piece of previous presentations with y'all and, and the, the rest of the presentation really dives deeper into floodplain. So I, I would suggest if there's any specific questions about this session law or for the town attorney, that we address those first.
Questions? Questions? So it's your opinion that we could approach this floodplain? See what I'm saying, ordinance? That scares me.
You can trick, it, it, it is scary. And it, and it's scary for me because you know, I'm always ultra conservative. I want to avoid any exposure. I don't want the town of Mills River to be on the bottom of the summons or in the court of appeals case. Um, but there's, there's a lot of language in, in this session's law that I think would support the, um, the hu- ultimate holding that you, you can, um, do that. There is a statute and, and I got a little excited, you know, in a geeky way, um, thinking, well, this might help. It's, it, but it's in one sixty A, it's not in one sixty D. That basically says you're, they're giving you specific authority, but it's kind of expanded, you know, for what, what you need to have to do the things they're giving you authority to do. And it talks about being liberally construed to give you the most possible authority. And, and I mean, that could still be used to, to, to apply this session's law to the floodplain ordinance. But, um, there, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna be sticking your neck out if you do. I, I just would rather argue your side in the Court of Appeals than the legis-, you know, the state side or whoever might take issue with.
So what would it look like for us to go down that road to try to establish this floodplain ordinance? Right now?
Right now?
What would it look like? I mean, other than what we're used to? I mean, at some point, do we just take a chance and by motion vote on it, pass it, throw it in here and see if it sticks to the wall?
You would draft it and hold, hold public hearings on, you know, once it was drafted and pass it like you would.
Well, let me ask you this. You know, I always ask all the tough questions. If we went down that road and it didn't stick to the wall, would you represent us for free?
For free?
So we're not going down that road then? You see where I'm at?
I mean, I understand. I.
I mean, that's what I'm asking. That's the best way I could ask you comfortably. How comfortably do you feel that's going down that road?
I've had consultant, consulting and lawyers come in with clients, someone in the past with, you know, million dollar damage kind of.
Yes.
And I've asked them that same question. I've said, it's easy for you to say you're going back to Raleigh or Charlotte, wherever it is. But it, but if my client gets sued, you're gonna represent him for free.
Yeah, I'm with you. I just, that's the easiest way I could get.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
And I mean, there, I say that for a lot of reasons, not the least of which is I'm not doing litigation anymore, but.
Okay, I got you. Any questions this way? Any questions now?
This may be a very silly question, but you're saying floodplain ordinance is that different than NFIP? Or is that, you're saying it to be the same?
Yes.
Participate in the NFIP, you have to adopt a.
So, but having a floodplain ordinance doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna participate in NFIP. It just means that if you participate in NFIP, your ordinance has to be such with no exemptions. But an ordinance on its own could have certain exemptions.
But. Not right, man.
It wouldn't, right, assuming we can do it now.
Yeah.
But, uh, if we had exemptions, say we exempted all agricultural property, then it wouldn't qualify for NFIP because federal government says no exemptions. Okay, thank you so much.
Do you have one, brother?
Um, do you have one sixty D? So I'm looking at one sixty D dash nine two three, one sixty D dash nine two three.
No, I've got it.
You got it.
On paper, that's not gonna help you all.
Oh, I've got it on paper, so.
That's why I'm saying it's in a different article. It says chapters in, have articles.
Right.
And it's in a different article from the planning and zoning.
Okay.
It's in an article that's related to environmental ordinance.
Okay. Where are you going with that? You gotta, well, I guess I'm trying to pull it up. It might take a minute.
Uh, so my que- in here, it says, and it says floodplain regulations. Any local government may enact and enforce floodplain regulation or flood damage prevention regulations as authorized by part six of article twenty-one of chapter one forty-three, which is basically NFIP um, of the general statutes and shall comply with all applicable provisions of that part, meaning what's in one forty-three, to the extent not inconsistent with this article. So as long as we're consider, that would have priority? Is the easy way to say it, over one sixty? And if we're given that authority by the federal government and the state says we can do this under that authority, then their regulation of one sixty on us for down zoning would be in conflict of one forty-three. So therefore, one forty-three would have precedent for them in floodplain management or regulation.
Well, m- my dealings with the state so far in my fifteen, sixteen years is when it gets right down to it, nothing takes precedence unless it's, uh, when it comes to this kind of stuff. It's the latest rope kinda overrides the back trail of whatever happened. Is that fair statement?
If, if I may just jump in here, I'm so sorry for a piece of housekeeping. We're getting feedback from the microphones. If we can, gentlemen, if we can take them off and put them down a little bit further off the collars where they're hitting, so we're getting the feedback in the top, so that's what's good for the online as well. Sorry.
So I, I'm not sure when you say take priority. Whatever, whatever the legislature decides, because they passed both, all these acts. Whatever they decide, when, you know, when they get up that day, it's gonna be what's, what they're gonna say takes priority. So my, my thought is what's a court gonna do?
Right.
A court's gonna go where you've gone and said, well, once in, in, in article, um, I forget which article, the zoning is in one sixty D dash six oh one, that article is talking about land use regulation. We come down to the article about floodplain and it is, um, in a article having to do with other uses and then environmental regulation. And that's exactly, you know, what I think would be persuasive to a court. But, um, and so yes, that would take, my argument is that would take prior, that would, that would govern whether or not these prohibitions apply to a floodplain.
Okay, anybody else? So I guess we'll move on with your, uh, where are we going now, NFIP?
Yes, we have a whole presentation digging further into the NFIP.
Let's do that.
Before we start, I would like to be excused from the vote specifically on the NFIP. I would like to see it split up for a floodplain ordinance versus NFIP because I do think that's separate.
Okay.
But I, yeah, I, I have affected property in the floodplain. That's, yeah, I, I would like to be excused.
Okay.
Um, I can sit here and not say anything like, good boy, or I can go back, whatever you want.
And, and, and it's really up to the rest of you, you know, as to whether he can participate in the discussion as a resource, just like, you know, Mike and I can. Um, and, and that might be valuable, but it's, it's really uh, up to all of you, including you, James, as to, you know, what you feel comfortable doing.
I wouldn't mind being a part of the discussion. I just, I don't wanna.
I hate to ask, but this, for clarification, is it for financial reasons? Would you be opting out of the vote for that or?
Yeah.
Or, okay.
Answer the question.
Sure.
You, it, it, it looks pretty certain to you that you would be directly financially impacted?
Right.
If a floodplain ordinance were adopted.
Either way, yes.
Okay. And, and depending on how that, there are ways that could be drafted that could modify the impact on you. So your land could be exempted, your property could be exempted for example. And that would have an impact. That would, that would modify the extent or the fact of the impact on you financially.
Yes.
The focus of the presentation is mainly informational, so.
Okay.
I mean, again, I think it's a council's pleasure how to proceed, but i- if it's the well council, I can go into the presentation, digest the information that, and then if council does get to a point where action's taken.
Okay. Yeah, I personally feel comfortable with staying for the discussion part. Is anyone else here see a financial, anything to gain from this? One way or the other, a loss or a gain? Nope. Me? Nope. Okay.
Does any of us own land in the floodplain?
I have, um, two hundred square feet of land. It's uh, understanding it's right at the very bottom corner of my property. It would be in the hundred year floodplain according to the county maps, but it's all piece.
I have zero in the floodplain.
I have zero.
I personally have zero. Family has land and.
All right, fair enough. Let's move on. If we get into something and we see we're getting into something that we don't feel comfortable, we'll talk, we'll stop, talk about it again.
So we talked about what floodplanes are. We're gonna go into that into a, a little more detail. Um, I brought forward some of these maps we saw at the city of Hendersonville meeting. So again, we have the normal channel of the river, the floodway around the normal channel of the river where the water body regularly overflows its banks. And then we have the flood fringe area, which is usually the hundred year floodplain. That's, all of those areas consist and make up the floodway. Sorry, floodplain. Here's another example, um, again, showing the floodway. Base flood elevation is again, the, the hydrologic mo- hydrologic like model that basically shows the, the hundred year flood, what that elevation, what that height would be above the stream channel. Um, so that's where the base flood elevation comes from. Um, one thing I showed in my original slide, uh, from the last presentations is the five hundred year floodplain. And I didn't explain this before, the five hundred year floodplain or zone X on the flood maps is not part of the regulatory floodplain. So any floodplain ordinance per, uh, the standards put out by FEMA would not impact five hundred year floodplain areas. And again, this just illustrates, um, if Phil is allowed in a floodplain ordinance, where that can go and, uh, examples of that. Um, obviously Phil could be allowed in the floodways, really dependent upon the ordinance, but that's when you get into the no rise certification engineering studies. So really, the first part of this is just more data. We really dug deeper down into the numbers. Um, we did some rough estimates in square miles. We went into, uh, actual acres of floodplain area. So we came up with two thousand and sixty-five acres in the town's jurisdiction, and you can see that broken down by the different floodplain areas. So still about fifteen percent of the town's jurisdiction is floodplain area, again, encompassing the hundred year floodplain and floodplain. Um, we also looked specifically at floodways because we know floodways or those non-encouchment areas are gonna require those engineering no rise studies. So seven hundred and seventy-two acres or about five point five percent of the town's jurisdiction is in floodway. Um, you can see it kind of varies by the water body. And again, that's just based on those, um, hydrology models. Um, twenty-eight percent of the Mills River flood, uh, floodplain, sorry. Twenty-eight percent of the special flood hazard area or the whole floodplain area is floodway for Mills River. Um, you can see it's quite high for the French Broad, seventy-five percent, but with that being a much larger spread out floodplain, that makes more sense. Um, and then we have McDowell Creek is a little higher than. Um, and then we have McDowell Creek is a little higher than others as well. So we broke it down by number of parcels, structures and type of structure, and then actual dwellings in the different areas. So this is specifically just from the Mills River floodplain, we have a hundred and seventy-six parcels that some part of them touch a special flood hazard area. Sixty-five structures uh, were in Mills River floodplain areas, uh, you can see the breakdown. Uh, twenty-two of the twenty-six residential structures are dwellings. Uh, and then you can see the specific numbers for the floodway as well. Um, here are the specific maps basically from uh, the North Carolina flood risk. It's called NCFRS flood risk inundation system. Um, so I tried to depict just the milk, the specific floodplains we're looking at. So with our jurisdiction ending kind of at Hooper Lane here, that was kind of my point for where the Mills River floodplain ended, at least in the town of Mills River, and then obviously going all the back, back uh, west towards where the river splits into the two forks. Uh, floodplain, hundred year floodplain is in blue, floodway is the crosshatched, and then the yellow is the five hundred year floodplain or zone X, again, not part of the regulatory floodway. So Boylston Creek, um, a lot of people don't think about it, but it runs most of our jurisdiction. So we have a hundred and twenty-six parcels in that special flood harri- flood, flood hazard area. Large number of residential structures mainly due to a Coney Bell. Um, so sixty-seven residential structures, fifty-five are dwellings. Now, they're not stick-built dwellings, um, but they are dwellings where folks are living in a special flood hazard area. So that's why that number is a bit higher for the Boylston Creek floodplain. Um, again, broke this up into two maps just because of the length of it, so we have the Boylston Creek floodplain starting at Ladsen Road here. Um, going down and then going all the way down to the county line with a Coney Bell, um, the community being about right here, South and Brickyard Road. Uh, French Broad River, uh, not, not as much of this floodplain is in the town's jurisdiction and the parcels are larger, so only nineteen parcels and six structures in total, um, only two of those are dwellings. Um, this perhaps a little harder to show, but the, the edge of the town's jurisdiction is in this uh, this yellow line here I'm trying to trace out. So basically, it's just these little areas on the left of the yellow line, that's McDowell Creek, so that's not even counted. Basically, this and that southern part um, is what we were looking at. Uh, and then for the McDowell Creek floodplain, we have sixty-five parcels, twenty-three structures. Um, again, more residential than I was expecting, uh, with twelve of those uh, residential structures being dwellings, and that's a large number due to a mobile home park on Keith Memorial Drive. So again, we can see the McDowell floodplain here. This is a Broad Point Drive right here, that's kind of where I drew my boundary between the French Broad and McDowell, and then the Keith uh, Memorial Drive Mobile Home Park is right here. So there's a, a number of units that are in the floodplain and floodway right over there, which elevated those residential numbers. So all of Mills River, all floodplains in Mills River, three hundred and eighty-six parcels, two hundred and thirty-five structures in the special flood hazard area. Seventy-three of those are ag structures, eighteen non-residential, or we couldn't categorize it. Hundred and forty-four residential structures and a hundred and eleven of those are dwellings. Twenty of those a hundred and eleven are in the floodway, not just the floodplain. Um, and then specifically, all those numbers just for the floodway, again, uh, fifty-one structures in total out of the two hundred and thirty-five are in the floodway, seventeen ag, thirty-one residential and three non-residential. You've seen the slide before, that was, uh, right there, any question about the data or the numbers or the maps?
Any questions?
No. Okay.
Okay.
We've seen the slide before, uh, basically, what is the National Flood Insurance Program? It's managed by FEMA, it's a, a federal insurance pool that, you know, can provide uh, flood insurance uh, for uh, home structures and even the belongings in those structures in floodplain, special flood hazard areas. Um, we've talked about this already, if you want to join the NFIP, you have to adopt a floodplain ordinance, which meets minimum FEMA standards to mitigate that risk, um, to make the insurance available. Existing structures not required to obtain flood insurance, but if there's uh, you know, substantial damage, substantial improvement of structures, or if hazard mitigation funds are taken, um, that, that could change whether those structures are required to obtain flood insurance. Uh, we talked about this already, we're one of, this is from twenty-one, but uh, twenty-seven communities in the state that don't participate. Uh, six hundred and thirty-four communities do participate in the flood program. Uh, we've seen this slide before as well, and I'm go- gonna go into some specific agricultural scenarios. Um, but agriculture uh, and land uses and structures are not exempt from floodplain regulations per FEMA. Uh, flood insurance would be available for those properties, and there's no specific requirements for ag structures, they're treated just like any other non-residential structure. Um, we can petition FEMA for a community-wide exception, I dug into that a little more with the state representatives. We would be the first community in North Carolina to ask for that. Um, and I'm digging into that more, but I just wanted to highlight that. Uh, variances, you know, um, there would basically, the Board of Adjustment acts as the watershed review board, so the Board of Adjustment could also possibly act as the floodplain review board. So variances could be granted um, to agricultural uses or others on, but on a case-by-case basis and um, dependent upon specific variant standards. And then uh, the last difference for ag uses and structures is there's different requirements, dry floodproofing versus wet floodproofing uh, for agricultural structures, so it still requires flood mitigation measures. Um, but some of those may have different costs and, you know, uh, the amount of improvements necessary to a project. Um, so thinking through what we heard at the ag advisory meeting and some of our previous meetings, I put together some slides just to talk through, you know, what I thought were maybe typical ag scenarios or questions about how this uh, potential floodplain regulations could affect someone. So can I raise the riverbank on my property five feet to avoid flooding of my fields? So right now, no requirements for this, we did hear that, you know, um, for protected trout waters, there could be US Fish and Wildlife or Army Corps requirements, but from the town's perspective, no requirements uh, or permits required for that type of work. Um, I did wanna highlight, if it's non-agricultural development and it's in a watershed, that would trigger a watershed permit, but not for ag. Um, under the NFIP or floodplain ordinance, raising a riverbank um, would require a floodplain permit. Any land disturbance is considered development, and because the riverbank's most likely gonna be in the floodway next to the river channel um, or stream channel, it would trigger that requirement for the engineering study no-rise certification, um, which can carry, you know, a co- a heavier, higher cost depending upon the study area, the area of impact. Um, obviously, fill is something the town can control in the ordinance as well, so setting that level of the amount of fill allowed could impact a project like that. Um, can I put a new drainage ditch on my property to drain runoff to the river? So again, currently, no regulations, no permits for this uh, for agriculture from the town's perspective. Um, and again, it depends on where it is, so under the NFIP, if the ditch is in the floodplain, you need the floodplain permit. Um, but if it goes into the floodway, we once again trigger that engineering study with the no-rise certification, because again, when the topograph, when the topography of the floodway or the non-encroachment area is changed, um, FEMA basically is requiring that that engineering study take place to make sure there is no rise to floodwaters that could impact another property. Um, can I clean up my drainage ditch regularly as it collects silt or dirt from stormwater runoff? Again, no, no permits or requirements now. Um, I've heard differing opinions on this. Usually, if there's no change to the dimensions of the ditch, you're actually just cleaning out accumulated sediment. Um, you wouldn't require a permit. Um, but again, the town's gotta be careful, because we don't wanna end up in a situation where we're gonna be audited by FEMA and could get caught in a scen- scenario where um, we might end up sanctioned again, people could lose flood insurance. So we would have, have to have some assurance, you know, from the farmer that it's just cleaning, not enlarging of a ditch. Once you enlarge the ditch, move it to a different loca- location, change the, the course of the ditch, that's when you trigger a floodplain permit, if it's just in the hundred year floodplain, if it's in the floodway, once again, the no-rise engineering study. Um, this is a relevant one after Helene, if my field is flooded and topsoil is washed away, can I bring in filled dirt or topsoil to replenish the field, build it back to where it was? Nothing required currently, excuse me. Um, nothing required currently, but again, once you bring in fill, even if that land was washed away, you're making a, a change to the floodplain or floodway. It's considered development and it triggers, I'm gonna sound like a broken record, triggers that same requirement. If it's in the hundred year floodplain, you need a floodplain permit. If it's in the floodway, you need the no-rise engineering study. And then again, limits on fill based on our ordinance standards. That's usually, I'll go into this a little further, that's usually on a percentage basis. So if I'm working on, let's say, two thousand square feet of riverbank, five percent of fill for that area may not be in my, a whole lot, but if I'm working on two acres of floodway, that five percent of fill could add up to more, so again, you have to be sensitive to um, how the fill limits or so. If my field's flooded and let's say it's the opposite, I've got all this silt and sediment on my property or fields, can I remove it? Well, unfortunately, again, you're changing the topography of the floodplain or floodway. So if it's in the hundred year floodplain, you need that floodplain permit, if it's in the floodway, you need that engineering study. I do need to confirm that a little more with the state reps, um, because again, you're not depositing material, you're removing material that was deposited naturally, um, but the, the standard rules would apply. Um, maintaining a riverbank, um, this is another one we need a little more clarification on, but again, the same thing. If you're making a change to the topography of a riverbank, which is in the floodway, at the edge of the, the river course or the channel, you're gonna need that non- uh, no-rise certification engineering study. What about structures, can I build a barn, store my ag equipment in? Um, no town permits required for this now. Again, any non-ag structure would require a watershed permit. Um, now, under the NFIP or if we have a floodplain ordinance, any new structure would have to have a floodplain permit. And there, again, with this ordinance, there are gonna be specific elevation requirements, or like I mentioned earlier, dry or wet floodproof, proofing requirements, where you might have louvers in the bottom of the building to let the water pass through, so your building doesn't get washed away and possibly hit a house down river. Um, and then again, if that structure's in the floodway, then you add on your no-rise engineering study, uh, once again. Um, I did say here, you know, the, the one possibility is requesting that uh, community-wide ag exception from FEMA for, for ag structures in the floodplain, but that, that exception would only be for structures, there's, there's no exception for the no-rise engineering study. And again, if we were to go this route, um, those, the state NFIP folks did say, you know, if we're gonna request a community-wide exception for agricultural structures, now would be the time when we're considering adopting an ordinance, but again, we would be the first to do so. Uh, if my ag building is damaged, can I rebuild it? Again, this is where you get into possibly triggering the substantial damage or substantial improvement requirements in the ordinance, which again, we can define, but there are some very minimum standards we would have to meet. So that's where, this is just an example. Um, if there's damage to a structure within a year and more than fifty percent of the market value of that structure's damaged, you need to rebuild it to the current standards, which means a floodplain permit and all of the other requirements I've mentioned previously. Um, here's, I, it's a lot of information, I tried to summarize it in the table. So again, floodway, land development or structure development, you need that, you're always gonna need the floodplain permit, but you're also gonna need that no-rise engineering study, and we've heard some numbers thrown out, couple thousand to a couple tens of thousand. Um, it is an NFIP requirement, there's no way around that. The only thing the town has discretion over would be the actual permit fee for that floodplain permit. Now, floodplain land development or floodplain structure development, again, you still need the floodplain permit, and the town can, you know, set the permit fee for that. Um, but the only thing we can get out of there uh, would be requesting the community-wide exception for ag and FEMA. Um, I bring this up every time just because uh, you know, again, good governance after Hurricane Helene. If we want NFIP or uh, the specific flood uh, FEMA assistance, I think it was the individual assistance for thirteen or fourteen properties, if we want to retroactively apply that to those properties for Helene damage, we have to have an ordinance in place by March twenty-seventh, six months within the federal disaster declaration. This would be a potential timeline for that. Obviously, extremely expedited. I believe that's the end, so I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Okay. So Sharon, what happens if we elect at some point to go into NFIP? We're found out of compliance or we just, for some crazy reason, didn't like it? Future councils didn't like it? Um, could, could we potentially be sued by the residents for falling out of that? Because they went and got this insurance, they built and put theirself in harm's way, in my opinion, but had the insurance to back. But then when we lose this or for any, whatever reason, crazy reason, it would be a crazy reason, I would think. Uh, would we be, how would we be obligated there?
So, I mean, first of all, anybody, anybody can sue, but, but would they have a, a valid claim? And, and it, so in two scenarios, one is you voluntarily just withdrew.
Okay.
Um, I don't, I don't believe anybody would have a viable claim for that. That's a decision y'all would make legislatively, you've got immunity for it, you know, and, and we're, you know, we'll talk about your insurance, but the insurance isn't gonna cover it, because it's a government, it, it's not a, the your insurance policy, as I understand it, says, you've got immunity and will of course do the defense cost to prove the immunity if you get served. For those things for which you don't have immunity, we're not gonna cover those, our insurance policy says we're not gonna cover those, because they wouldn't otherwise be covered um, but for our insurance policy. And the courts have upheld that, so you, you pay for premium, but they don't really provide anything but your defense cost. They will always provide your defense cost. And, and what the court says is you've got immunity because you don't have insurance. Um, so if, if you make that voluntary, you know, that voluntary decision, that, that um, I'm sure thoughtful decision for whatever reason, then, then nobody would. If you've done something unwise, for lack of a better word, and that causes you to lose it, it's gonna be a little bit different. People are gonna say, we've invested our money in reliance that the town's gonna do what the town ought to do. Now you've done something you shouldn't have done, or you've not done something you should have done. Um, and again, it's, it's gonna be the town, it's gonna, you know, it's not gonna be you all and you're not gonna have any individual exposure for that.
How would staff control field of any sort? How, I mean, is this gonna be engineered surveys brought forward? Y'all going out and do the field evaluation before and after? I mean, I'm in this building business and I can't imagine ten or twenty percent of field and how we're gonna regulate that.
The, the burden will fall on the applicant.
Okay.
So I mean, the applicant is the one that's going to have to have a surveyor, have an engineer draw that up, calculate it out.
Okay.
And, and again, you know, if we enter the program, like we've heard many times, it has to be enforced, and I will enforce it, because we don't, once we enter it, we don't wanna lose it.
Sure.
Um, so I, I would have to come up with, with some way to guarantee or check that what was submitted was correct. And there, there's ways of doing that, just like for watershed right now, when we have high-density developments with stormwater controls, there's a hundred and fifty ta- pages of uh, stormwater calculations, rain runoff weights. We pay an engineer to review that to make sure the applicant's submitting something in good faith.
Okay, and, and if I may, just briefly, just, we were talking about compliance and falling in and out, uh, falling out of compliance. The uh, the state representatives that were here talking about that from the NFIP also talked about, it, it, it wouldn't be of a situation where one, and, and a, a thing happens and then it gets reported, and then all of a sudden, we, because of one potential mishap, we have now fallen out of compliance. There's a process for trying to then get the organi- uh, get the town back into compliance and working through that process to try to get, to ensure we have processes in place, that we have checks in place to remain compliant, it would take, uh, and I don't, and I'm not gonna put timelines or anything, but, but it would take uh, a effort to get into a position where you would then fall out of compliance because of, because of issues around that uh, uh, applicability.
Everybody would work together with mitigation to try to restore it back to where it fit inside that ordinance.
Yeah, that, that's my understanding, and again, generally speaking, is, and that's uh, uh, Mr. Garrett and, and Mr. Fox. uh Mr. Garrett and, and Mr. Fox over here, we're talking, they, if council wishes to go this direction, it would be uh their job is also to help ensure compliance, to making sure that the community i- is adhering to it, not as a punitive measure, but as a proactive measure to uh to make sure it's uh being adhered to.
If we try to hit this March twenty seventh deadline, how many of the thirteen or fourteen dwellings that was affected, has any of those folks come forward pushing for us to move on this, to get it retroactive back to them?
Not to my knowledge, and, and I don't have any information about where those folks are, just because it's a FEMA application.
I got you, and, and me and Matt went to a conference there on Tuesday. And eighty percent of two hundred and fifty-four thousand some odd homes that was damaged have total FEMA, it's a dusty trail, we don't want your help, eighty percent. Eighty percent said, go on, we don't want you. So, and we've got that in some literature somewhere, but it was crazy, it was unbelievable numbers. And they just think it has to do with the mountain people here. But uh they said this, we'll, we'll handle this, go on. So uh that's why I was asking, because nobody's been to any of our meetings trying to push us to get it on through. So, you know, uh. That's all I have, anybody else got anything else? Anything? Nope. Hey. So. So with this discussion, uh where are we at, folks? Uh need to figure out where we're at this. Sharon, what it, so if I'm understanding you correctly, you're uh saying it wouldn't be a wise thing for us to move forward with this floodplain ordinance and adopt it? We might could keep looking at it, keep getting everything the way we'd like to see it done, but just have to hold it until we can get, get a local bill passed or they withdraw.
So you get clarity on the application of those.
Okay.
I'm saying you could, but.
That's making sure, okay, making sure.
And just for clar- further clarification around the floodplain ordinance itself, council can help provide clarity on if you all would like us to continue working through that and whether or not that floodplain ordinance needs to be focused on the NFIP minimum standards, that we're continuing to work through the timeline here, or that we need to just continue to have conversations, generally speaking, about what a flood, floodplain ordinance may look like within the town of Mills River. They have, they, they have, they're similar but slightly different approaches to how uh we, uh how staff can look at drafting a potential floodplain ordinance.
Okay, so. What staff's time looking like? I know this has took quite a bit of time coming up with all these stats that you're going with. Where are you at? Have you got, I know you got plenty on your table. Would you like to see us throw some more of this on there and you start trying to box it in a box for us, or do you want us to, or do you want me to pull council here and see where we're at? Because we can't do NFIP without the floodplain ordinance. So we got to get one ready to go with the other. So.
I would, I would ask for clarification, yeah, from the will of council as well.
Exactly, that's where I'm going.
I'm with that.
No, don't worry about it right now, is that what you're saying?
I don't think we need to go down that path.
I, I don't see any way we could meet the target time.
I'm not even, I don't, I wouldn't even think about that.
But.
Uh I mean, I, I agree with that, it's going to be tough. Especially with this, with our legislators not confirming where we can go for sure.
I would be in favor of looking into a floodplain ordinance that we could tailor to fit the river that would allow us to exempt agriculture. But other than that, I, I would be more concerned about having flood studies, no rise studies, everything.
I'll come to you next, James. Brian?
Do you want to make a last thing?
Go ahead.
Where are you at with it? Um. Trying to think, I want to put, say this. I think after all the stuff that we've learned and what we've seen in the last six months, no one can deny that it's important to protect a floodway and it's important to protect the safety of residents who live in a community that has land in the floodway. Um so I think it's our responsibility and due diligence as a town to protect that. So we should continue down the path, continue to look at what an ordinance could possibly look like. Um I agree, we're not going to meet the um the deadline, and I don't think that was the purpose of this whole discussion. Um but I think after we've seen what we've seen, we've all been educated as to how this works, to not do anything is negligent.
Good, I'm good, James.
I have no opinion on the national flood insurance, but I do have a strong opinion on the, I think we need to look into a, the fill ordinance separately. Um there is no denying that we don't have anything in place, so beside two eighty party, the townhomes put four friggin' feet of water on my business. So you know, we are doing other residents or businesses in Mills River a disservice by allowing everybody to fill.
I'm with you.
I mean, it's not, and I, you know, if you own floodland in the hundred year, five hundred year, you I, yeah, I'm going to shut up, I'm done.
Okay. So I'm with you on uh I won't say no field because it's my understanding that DOT needs a little flexibility because if we put zero fill, period, that a lot of places on their roads and even to maintain them, if we've got zero fill, they can't bring them up to standards, but but I'm agreeance with the big time fill and all, we got to get a hold of that. We got to capture that in this floodplain ordinance that we'll draft up and hopefully sooner than later get it into compliance where we can use it as a tool. Uh and then on the C insurance, my biggest fear with the C insurance is, you know, that's some of our cheaper ground. Don't think for a minute, I'm going to draft this up, but I'm not going to be here forever. And I'm going to go talk to these people and try to get some of it and I'm going to try to build in it because now I can get insurance and I can get them people cheaper home. Because the land here is so high. If you can buy some floodplain land and, and get them in there, even if it's on stilts, it's cheaper. It's already happened, but if we can control that, you know, if we can, if we can draw that in and capture that and, and cut it out, we can protect a lot more in the future by not even letting them in there to start with. And that's where I want to go with this, if there's any way possible. Let's just keep them out of harm's way to, you know, you know. The only thing for me, and then people just want to know that had insurance, expected it and, you know, that insurance didn't do a hundred and five of them any good, you know, uh so. So where are we going with it?
So you're saying floodplain ordinance, let's look into it, let's don't try to meet NFIP standards because we do want to have the ability to exempt agricultural uses.
Yeah, and, and a lot of other uses. I mean, me personally, I, I regulate a lot of other uses other than just agriculture. I mean, if we're trying to keep this place rural and all and keep people out of harm's way, let's keep them out of harm's way. That's me speaking, I'm just one. But my question is, are we directing Mr. Malacheck to move forward as he has time? Because we've overloaded him with this, I feel, to him and uh planet committee to get us something together to start looking at by when? June one, July one, August one, May one? I mean, if we give him uh an idea, then they'll know how hard to hit it or to work on some of these other things, I don't know what they've got on their tier to work on.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, the um one rec- one recommendation that I would provide is if, if council gives us direction, if council gives staff direction, that we need to uh look into a floodplain ordinance that does not currently meet NFIP standards yet, uh is tailored towards the needs within Mills River, that's what I'm hearing. Um then what I will do is I'll work with Mr. Malacheck and staff to ensure that there's a timeline that we can put together and then we could come back to you all with what that update looks like, potentially via a manager's report or via an email, just to let you know what that looks like so that if there is any um, you know, disagreement or discre- or, or issues around that with that timeline looks like based off of the workload capacity that we have, then we can have that conversation at that point.
Is that a consensus at council to move forward in that direction? Yes.
Or is it floodplain ordinance, right, and brought the?
Has it brought, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Future, future councils can always take us back up. This is, our opinions, the five of us right now, you know, it could be changed in two or three years, it could be modified, NFIP can be stamped back on it and some stuff provisions pulled out of it to make it fit it out of our floodplain ordinance later on.
Or the federal government can be changed to allow.
Exactly, okay. So you, you good with that? Okay. So uh moving on, B, consideration of local bill exemption and adoption of the resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh three.
Thank you, Ms. Malacheck, thank you, Ms. Alexander. Um there may be some further questions around this for Ms. Alexander as well.
I think so.
Um but uh, try not to run too far away, please. Uh but before we actually move on, uh there was actually one speaker that was uh that signed up for the public hearing portion of the last item and I would ask council to, that we open up that uh ability for them to speak.
Public hearing.
I'm sorry, no, for the, for the item, for the agenda item.
Absolutely, yes, yeah, because I who we had.
That, that, that was the, that, Mr. Young was the one.
Oh, you're good? Oh, you're good now?
Okay. All right. Right now, uh moving on, mayor and council, yes, so the next item, as the mayor mentioned, it was considered, uh considering adoption of resolution twenty-five oh three, which is the resolution requesting a local bill restoring the downzoning authority of the town of Mills River. And so as a reminder for you all, but for those listening in the audience and at home, uh the January twenty twenty-three meeting and, and the January meetings in general, uh council uh directed staff to start putting together a potential local bill draft for your review and consideration, this is what that looks like. Um based off of the conversations that we have, the local bill draft before you is a, is a blanket exemption uh draft, um this is, um which basically means that it would be repealing, repealing, uh the, the request would be to repeal all aspects of uh S uh twenty twenty-four dash fifty-seven around that provision. The um, this is also tailored based off of other uh local bills that have been uh, have been filed at the general assembly, so the language is boilerplate in that regard. Um but obviously, as, as council, you all may choose to uh review the, uh review this, pass it, table it for further consideration, deny it for what it is and/or change even the local bill uh draft language itself uh before going forward. The last thing I will mention, the resolution that is tied to this uh does uh ask that this gets sent to uh, to our state representatives, Representative Baucham, Senator Moffett and Governor Stein for their consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have about this, the process or, or anything else.
So a lot of this I would consider is our name attached to some other, we drafted this based on some other potential bills that's going to be brought forth to the floor in the future down there, when they get time to listen to those, it's a, would be ahead of this one potentially. Or did this language, uh how did you come up with this language? Is this y'all's talk or did y'all pick this up from somewhere or?
Yeah, so this language is, uh so, and just for purposes of those in the room, uh local bills are requests that go uh before representatives uh or, or sponsors of a bill. And so right now, this language is, is actually, it, it, it's essentially the repeal of what's on that last page of, of the, that session law. And that there's a house bill, there's actually now multiple house bill and incentive bills with a language similar to, if not uh verbatim to this, because it is a full repeal, that have been considered filed and potentially within certain areas of the um of, of, um, of committees. So I can't speak on, you know, the speed and, and the, where it lands because that's a committee decision, et cetera.
Okay. Questions?
I notice um there is a statement here about flood, national flood insurance program. We want to take that out, would that imply that we're still considering? Right now, it sounds like as a council, we're not considering flood insurance program. We are considering a floodplain ordinance, floodplain regulations. So should we look at maybe taking out the NFIP?
That the, that the council, that makes perfect sense to me at this point.
I'd be okay with changing it to flood management practices and then it's the broad scope of everything.
There you go, I think that makes sense.
If I may, just for clarification here, this is the one, two, three, four, five, six, the whereas. Um am I hearing whereas the town of Mills River is considering the adoption of flood management practices in the wake?
Yeah.
It's considering the adoption, I'm sorry, I'm just saying this out loud to make sure, of flood management practices.
I think from what I've heard that um we're not sure that they're going to do anything with this, so rather than have this sitting out there, I think it might be wise to table it for right now and see what comes out um down the road and see what they come up with. With some modifications and changes, it might be a better bill than what they have right now. And I believe that's what they're looking at.
Right. Um. Hey.
If this is not sponsored,
Yes.
but we still turn it in
Yeah.
or put it on the table, does that eliminate us from joining a bigger one like from Henderson County or something? Like we, we can have our name on this on multiples, does that make sense?
And so.
I need help, I'm, I'm, as far as I know in all my time here, I've never tried to get a, a local bill introduced, so.
So, so what this would be is that the, this, the re- a resolution is a request. So essentially, you are formally requesting that they consider uh a local bill of this nature, right? Now, again, and, and I'm going to look over because we do have our attorney in the room, is the, uh and so if you start seeing hands pop up, just let me know. Um but with that being said, they, there, right now, by this being sent there, there's not a local bill filed. Right? It is requesting a local bill be filed. Um the idea of having a sponsor would essentially say, um there is a sponsor willing to, you know, move forward on this local bill and bringing it uh and, and bringing it forward within the general assembly. Uh so the, that, so that's a long-winded way of saying, and my, and, and from my understanding, no, it would not prohibit you from putting your name onto any other items that may come forward within a local bill because technically, this is not a local bill, it's a request for.
Okay. And I could foresee this going to Ms. Baucham or Mr. Moffett and then modifying this and send it back and see if this would be acceptable for them to introduce as a local bill. Maybe, maybe not. But. Okay. Right. Yeah, my very first phone call with Mr. Moffett told me to go ahead and get me a local bill drafted up and get it ready. But I ain't heard a duplicate of that yet, but that was the very first thing he told me on the very first phone call when uh three, bill three eighty-two hit the floor even before it was. on the very first phone call, when Bill 382 hit the floor, even before it was vetoed. Just get your local bill ready and send it forth, so. But I haven't heard him say that to me since, but that don't mean it ain't still a good word.
So I understand, he's asking us to write a local bill.
Well.
Not a resolution.
The ability to, yeah, get your, yeah, basically send him this and they'll help with it. But that was months ago.
And just for clarification, council member more on this, is that, yes, it would be that what's before you is the passage of the resolution with the local bill draft for their consideration. They would be packaged together to go there.
Yes.
But again, they have, they have staff there that's dedicated to helping to actually formalize what that draft looks like before filing it. We've just put it in a format that is consistent with what those local bills would look like.
I think it would behoove us as a council to take a little time to reach out to our representatives and maybe two members of council personally go see them and personally explain the story of Mills River, to make it more personal to them and why it's, versus just sending them a piece of paper. We have to get them on board if they're going to tell us whether they're going to do it or not. And if they're not going to do it, there's no point in sending them the piece of paper. We need to move on to the next person who's willing to support Mills River in this.
Man, would it be fair to say that what we've heard lately is we would probably have to come to Raleigh to do that personally? What was your last, did we get any other options other than that from Ms. Baucham?
So I'll just, generally speaking, the General Assembly is currently in session, which means Monday through Friday, their schedules are within Raleigh. And so there's difficulty, again, generally speaking, in order to get back within the representative's areas around the state during the week. So one of the things that I have asked about, and they've been amenable to, is whether or not we have a delegation from Mills River come to Raleigh to have those meetings, because that's where they're at during the week.
Okay.
Okay.
Kind of music you listen to?
Whoever's dropping. All right, so with that being said, so it looks like there's consensus to table this for the time being, till y'all get a chance to try to personally talk to them.
I'll say table it.
I agree, table it.
I got one more question.
Yes.
Well, they, they won't even look at this or have their people look at it without formally turning it in. We can't say, hey, will you take a look at this? What do you think the edits will be?
I would say that would be done in the personal get together.
Okay.
One piece of information I think would be helpful as well is that for the, on the representative side, the deadline for a formal requesting of a, of a local bill is February 20th. So it must be presented to the staff and received.
And that is in both, one was earlier, right?
On the Senate side, it was, it's actually today.
Today?
Yes. So that's why, so, so I would just say, if council so chooses to table this until a later time, there would be, we would miss the deadline with, on the Senate side, but we do have an opportunity on the representative side.
But we would have to have a special call meeting to get together to enact it after somebody run down there. It's the day's 13th, so we've got basically a week. And I'm, you know, man, I'm gonna say it like it is. I mean, there are not going to be these people getting holed up. I'm just telling you. I ain't bashful about it. I mean, I've ordered phone out. I mean, he's had a little more luck than I have here lately. But I don't know if he, do you feel comfortable getting us a meeting date if two go? How good do you feel about that in the next few days?
Well.
I mean, I'm not trying to throw you on the bus, I'm just asking your percentage. It ain't gonna, I mean, they're tough, they're politicians, they can handle it.
I would say that would do, you know, best, my best effort to try to coordinate something with our staff to where you all be able to have a meeting. One area that may be a compromise in this to consider is moving forward with, if this language is something that you would like to send up in some way, shape, or form for them to consider, doing so in conjunction with a request to them for a meeting in the city of Raleigh, so that then technically, they can consider it now. There is the filing deadline on the 20th, and we can work on trying to get a meeting with them to where, again, you all are able to share your story as a delegation to them. So that's a way to be, potentially meet both opportunities there.
I mean, that's where I'm at with it. I mean, we've got it drafted up, we've forwarded on, they can modify it if they see fit, and we can be okay with it. If we're not okay with how they drafted up, we could tell them we were refrained from having it brought forth.
So if the deadline is the 20th, that's next Thursday?
Yeah.
So that means?
And we've got noticing days too, for a special meeting, we've got to have, how many? Yeah.
Well, and that, and that would be the other part of this, which the 20th is the date to get something, your formal requests in, that is not the.
When they'll hear it.
That's not the end of the discussion. And so that's why that may be an opportunity to say, hey, we meet that formal request, you've sent it in, but that may provide breathing room and time to create or to try to set up a meeting for that conversation.
Okay. Because it would be hard to get down there by the 20th, but if all we have to have by the 20th is a formal request, I think that's reasonable if staff.
It's a little more complicated than that.
If I may, since we do have our town attorney in the, in the house, I will look and just to make sure that I've not, that there's nothing else that we need to be thinking about when it comes to that local bill.
Yes.
Thank you.
So either, so either, it looks like our options is either we go ahead and, by motion, send this on and with a request to meet in person with a couple of council members at their convenience in Raleigh, which would have to happen Monday or early Tuesday, because she's got to have 48 hours to post us a meeting, special call meeting on this only, to come back in and say, is that, no? If we send it on, no.
Yeah, so.
If we send it on, no.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, that is my understanding, absolutely. So you'd send it on, now again, they, it would be modified, and so that would be the conversation piece, right, where you've sent it on, the conversation would happen, they would just have to file to the point of what that looks like by next Thursday.
And if they modified it all, does that put us in a position to have to make a, take a vote on if we accept the modification or not, or not? Okay, okay.
And in this regard, it's a, it's a local bill that they are sponsoring, right? So that's, so it'll be on.
It looks like it'd be a Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, if y'all could get down there to give them Thursday to get it to where they liked it and get it on. Is that a possibility for you?
I think I could do it Monday or Tuesday, possibly Wednesday.
Then you got to make sure that they can meet with you on Wednesday. So we got, you know, is anybody else could go? If he can't go, and it's got to be a Monday or Tuesday, I think it's real important.
I mean, if I can take Matt, I can take Matt with me.
We share similar musical tastes, that's why he's mentioning that. But yeah, so I, I will, I will work with my schedule to make sure that we, if we can find that time, we will make that happen, sure. What I would recommend is that we, whatever council suggests, that then I will reach out first thing in the morning with the, with the request to see if we have, if we can put something on the books.
Okay.
Now, councilwoman is maybe, so can we have three of us go? I mean, Mr. Campbell, myself.
Well, I mean, the three of you could go, just more than two councils could.
Right.
Okay.
I want to clarify that for anyone, because I did say the three of us, I want to clarify.
It wouldn't hurt to have any, you know, for legal end of it, okay? You good with that? Yeah, we're going, I'm going to do this, but then we'll have to have a motion approved.
I don't think we need to stick our neck out, I think we need to wait and see what the others are going to do. That's what I've heard from several people. And the fact that Senator, Mr. Ms. Baucham and Mr. Moffett don't come speak to us when we've reached out to them, I think that says we need to wait.
Well, I got to answer, what part of that tells you to wait?
They don't contact us back.
You represent us.
Yeah, she, yeah, yeah.
I do represent Mills River residents, and.
I got a point, point of order.
Yeah, let's try not to, let's try not to argue, let's, but you, I'm just asking you the person, I can ask you, what part of that makes you think we need to wait? I might be missing something while I ask.
I think that the landowner has rights, and the municipality needs to respect the landowner's rights.
I think that if it takes someone going down there to talk to them, I think we need to make that effort.
We can make it that convenient.
To Raleigh to talk to them.
James.
One quick hypothetical question.
Yeah.
So you go down there, Ms. Baucham says, sure, but I want to change it to something that you hate. We all hate. And we say no, can she still file it?
Yeah, absolutely, yes, sorry, I was looking, that's one of those moments I was very excited to make, make sure my head shake was the same. Yes, it's their, it's their bill, it's their local bill. We're requesting them to do something on our behalf.
She could tighten it up worse on us if there is anything worse on us.
And, and if I may, I just, again, and I just getting a point of clarification on this as well, when Ms. Alexander mentioned, you know, a blank bill, what we're really trying to, one option is to essentially, they're able to modify after the filing. So what we're, what we're really asking for is.
Get a spot in line.
Get a spot in line, have something filed, and then that conversation can be what that potentially could look like. So that's why if it's specifically this language and convincing, or having the conversation to convince to file exactly this bill, that would, you know, potentially have to be a shorter timeline. If however, the conversation is a local bill trying to work through the process and have that meeting, then there's opportunity to modify after it's officially filed. So that nuance, I think, is very important for this conversation about how, the speed in which we need to move.
Got you.
And I think it's important for us to, the needs of Mills River are different than the needs of Henderson County. The needs of Mills River are different than the needs of Etowah. So us partnering with other people may be a good idea, however, we're, we're a unique situation. We're only 20 years old, we're, there's so many things that are unique to Mills River that I think that we have to, we got, we got to stand up for ourselves.
Right.
I can add something, I think everyone's had a chance to speak, I can add one more thing. And Ms. Good, I totally agree with you on property rights, but I feel like property rights in the town of Mills River, I mean, we were elected to be guardians of public trust here and ensure property rights as the town of Mills River wants us to do it. And I think that while we have our state representatives do what in their consciousness, and they do that, they don't come to our meetings, they don't hear our planning board, they don't hear, they don't have that level of participation here that they need to make Mills River zoning decisions. So I really think that while we as an elected body may choose to not change and to not do any rezoning, that still should be our choice. And, you know, we, our, our ability to sit here in four years depends on how we represent our people, but that should be our decision. And in this case, that's why I think that we, we should try to get them to exempt Mill River from this, to let us do what we feel that we need to do and that what our citizens feel like we need to do. And because we're here, we're here twice a month, our planning board is here once a month at least, and we're all putting that diligent diligence in that they just don't have the opportunity to do.
I understand that, and I've talked to a lot of people on this, and the landowners that live here want to keep it rule. It's the developers that come in here and buy big tracts of land that want to change. And the residents that own the land can put stipulations on land they sell on, there's deed restrictions that go on, it can be done that way without putting a blanket ordinance over everybody.
I mean, I understand, Sandra, but, you know, somebody wanting to sell a piece of land don't always have the best forethought to protect it. They're looking after a revenue change in their wallet. And I'm not saying that everybody would not look after it, but most will not even think of that. They're just looking to sell, new developer, new owners looking to do what they want to with it. And the property rights from the first guy to the second guy may be the same, but look totally different as to what they do with the property. I get it. I think we're all in it for the same reason, to take care of everybody and make it as rule as possible.
That's the goal.
But right now, our ability to do that has been frozen in time, you know, frozen in time. That's what I don't like about it. I don't think for a minute they ain't trying to look after us. But I just don't think they understand that they have locked us down in time with this. And us being young, writing a good start of a UDO process here with almost $200,000 out there to have it done, no, I don't like that. I mean, no, you're never going to convince me, I'm not going, I'm going to argue that till they run me off. I mean, this.
And I look at it this way, I own property here, and if you come on my property and tell me what I can and can't do, I'm going to have a problem with you. I mean, that's just being honest.
Yeah, but that's why you're here, you get your one, one fifth of, one fifth of this vote is your decision making to, to set these processes in place to where it fits the best of what we feel for the whole community.
Right.
Did you pick up on something else while you was making?
Yes, just one point of clarification, so we have to form, the formal request date is February 20th. The, her, the representative filing date is March 6th. So the, and so at least that, is that correct, Mr. Malachek? So just, just for, just for that clarification there, now, again, there are steps that are associated with that formal request process, again, this is, this is one of those steps. But the, the actual filing of the bill is March 6th.
So with that being said, anyone else?
More time, a little bit more time to plan a trip to Raleigh.
No.
No.
It just gives us time to negotiate.
We just need her time to modify what she would like to bring up as a bill. She's still got to get a spot holder in place by the 20th.
Okay.
Okay.
Correct, that is, that is correct, I just wanted to make, I just wanted to provide that context, that there is time, once those meetings happen, for that negotiation afterwards. So the, yes.
So I'm, you guys will have to think about how you want to word your.
So I make a motion to adopt resolution 2025-03 and approve the draft with the modified language of a local bill restoring the downzoning authority to the town of Mills River.
And would you, in that motion, or do you want two motions to also coordinate a visit with the local representative? How do we need to do that?
I don't think we need a motion for that.
Don't need a motion for that?
No, do we need to send the motion to remove the NFIP language?
Well, send the modified.
Yeah, we.
Okay, sorry. Well, I'll second that.
All right, any discussion?
No.
I'll bet for.
I mean, it's up to y'all.
I think that we could look at ordinances that we could put in place or text amendments that could help with keeping it rule. that could help with keeping it rule without the council down zoning it.
I think
Is there no
Trust me, I'm not picking on you. But you got to understand that if we can't get this changed, none of that that you just said can be done.
Well, but they're working on it right now. There's more people than us that are not happy with it.
Well, I'm telling you, I'm not happy with it.
I've heard that.
Happy with it. I am not happy.
And I respect that.
Big overreach. But in saying that, my personal opinion is is I'm going to jump on board with with his motion, his second to move this on down the road. Them guys down there that's working on it, I think the more pressure they get put on them, the more they're going to realize that they hastily, in my opinion, put this on the very back of that dental bill. We've we've done this in the past here. A week. That's why we're doing text amendments because we didn't foresee everything that we had in an ordinance. And I really feel like if they hastily covered somebody's hind end down they're telling me down east, I've heard five different stories and they may be covering all five of them. But I'm not preaching, but I'm telling you, I get a different story from everyone I talk to. So do I believe any of them or do I believe all of them? And there probably a time issue here that they're having to wait to get some stuff fixed down there. And then it'll ah magically disappear. Well, if we're not affected by it and we shove this on down there and they say, oh, yeah, Mills River, yeah, this was down here in Durham. Yeah, yeah, go ahead and let them get back at it. I'm good with that. But if they're going to hold our feet to the fire to cover their butts down there, I've been in this long enough to know what's going on, then then I'll just have to sit here and hold my feet to the fire till they get it worked out amongst themselves. You know? But I'm a advocate for this is an overreach and I don't like it. And I just want to get on the business as usual here in Mills River. Now that I've seen this flood, I want to get a floodplain ordinance in. I want to get this bill out of here. I want to do as much as I can for the people around here. But my hands are frozen in time. And I just want to make sure that when you go home tonight, you understand that I'm not against you on this. I'm for those things, but we can't do those things until I get this rectified or me some relief from it. That's all I'm saying. And I think if we wait, 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 in my opinion, it makes us look bad. I mean, because I've got people that are here that are telling me to do something, try to get something done about this. I'm not hearing but from one person to to wait. I'm hearing, you know, once you sit down and explain to them what they're doing, I'm only hearing from one person to wait.
I'm just one vote. You can take a vote. That's up to you.
Well, any more discussion before we go to vote? And uh, no? All right, all we got a first, we got a second. You caught up? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we got through that one. So we got marching orders on that one. Let's see, I gotta find where I'm at. So now we're down to the presentation of our tax collector, our new tax collector.
Newly minted. Yes, so Chris, so Kristen, as she walks up and gets settled, is just providing you the the updates on the tax collector's reports and you'll see Orley's name as well on the property tax settlement. I know that Kristen will go through that with you.
Good evening.
Great.
So you've got two reports in front of you tonight. The first is the property tax settlement. Usually council only sees this at the end of the fiscal year, settling the whole years of tax. But because we had a tax collector leave midterm, this is Ms. Taylor's settlement of her end of books and where we stand. The second report is your normal monthly report. And it shows the same figures as the other one, but does show you that we collected 96.44% of the levy through the end of January. And that is ahead of where we were in 2023 at 96.01. And as Mr. McCaryhan said, we did send out the delinquent letters to give people a head start on catching up. And that is seeing response. Any questions?
Awesome. Awesome. Is that all you got, horse?
That's all I got for you.
How you liking your job so far?
It's great.
Is it? Good.
I I work with the best people. What can I say?
You had a very good trainer, you know?
I did.
For a short time you did you if you caught on, I hope you caught on to if you got 70% of it, you're going to be awesome. Right on me since you're here. Ah, good, good, good. So I like it.
As much as I love the new job, I miss Orley, so.
Yeah, we'll miss her tremendously. I hope as long as she's here and not up in Tennessee, she comes to visit pretty regularly. Good. That's hot. It's a good habit, though. It's not a bad habit. Good habit. All right. All right, so let's go back up here. If that's all you got, horse, other business? Anybody got anything? You know? Make a motion to adjourn our record agenda. Uh, James second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then we'll need a motion to go in our business meeting?
Make a motion, we go on the business meeting?
Uh, second.
I'll second.
Uh, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? You know? Okay.
So because of the conversation tonight, we kept the the agendas light just but so this is your time again, as a reminder for anything individual council members, if you ought to talk about any potential future agenda items that may be coming up. As a reminder, the last time we talked, we talked about a FEMA update potentially coming forward. I'm going to recommend right now that we actually build that in as a part of our budgeting process because I think it's going to be fitting in on where we're currently at and where we're, you know, projecting moving forward. And then the next meeting, we're looking currently at trying to bring in our HR contractors to help us with their and consultants to help give provide some updates on our HR assessment. That's where we're currently at. The only other thing I would mention is that from I've heard earlier with the direction from council around a floodplain ordinance draft that in future agendas, when that is ready, once we have that, that'll be a part of your business meetings moving forward until we're ready to potentially move forward with a with some action.
Saying great. Anybody got anything else?
I do.
What you got?
Oh, I would like to talk about the Lower Park, the Wildflower Meadow. My schooling tells me that that's dead, that it flooded. And I know that the we partnered with Soil and Water to to plant that. And so I think that there's going to we're going to have to work with them to get it reseeded. I think there's some form of contract there that we would have to do. But we're coming to seeding time. So I'd like to see on a future agenda, something about to where we can give you direction to reseed that or do do something with the the Wildflower Meadow.
Just bear.
Yeah, and the we planted that patch of grass and made it flat. Like half of it, maybe a little less is dead. The grass is dead.
So if I may, just for my context, are you talking about the area further further up on the within the meadow area? So closer to the midpoint before getting over into the parking lot over here at that section, that flat area there?
Okay. I just don't want to miss planting dates.
So in saying that, are you okay with Nicole giving a updated presentation on where we stand with all the park grills at the next meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to.
With all this included?
If I may, to to give us a little bit of time to try and find what that potentially would look like, I will tell you, generally speaking, the although it looks bare down there, the we are in the process of an RFQ to work on the storm debris cleanup down there as well. And and then other areas to get it back up and going. So the there's a lot of work. In fact, the majority of the storm debris work, the storm debris work has not started down there. We have moved the storm debris off of the trail to allow our residents and 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 community members to come out and use that part of the trail. But both interior of the trail as well as exterior of the trail are still considered a part of the storm debris removal site. And so which means we're going to be looking at FEMA reimbursements, which means we're going through that process right now. We're 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 working steadily through it. In fact, although it may not feel like it, we are moving quite quickly on this. But to your point about potential timelines, we and we can talk about this more during the FEMA update as well. The timeline isn't going to be, you know, within the next month or two. Right? We're we're talking about storm debris cleanup, then, you know, followed by then grading work, followed by replantings, you know, you know, et cetera. So I would just that's generally speaking. I don't have any of the RFQ timelines in front of me, but it is going to take more work and effort than what it may appear currently out there as with it being flat.
Hang on one second. Is that is that Wildflower Meadow section? Does it got devastation in it, debris in it?
I know. I think you you basically you have right where you've got the silt off the path and made the piles. And then I'm assuming that's going to be a FEMA thing to come scoop up and move somewhere. But I'm talking about the two mower pass in where it's the Wildflower Meadow. And then I've remembered something about we entered into a contract with Soil and Water. So I don't know that we can just treat with glyphosate and reseed without breaking that contract with them. But I'm I walked it the other day and it's dead. It's not dormant. It's dead. I just I'd hate for it to be seven feet weeds this summer.
So what what we can work on, and this may be an opportunity. And again, I'll work with our Parks and Rec Director on this is potentially provide an update on what the the meadow looks like, the timeline and the potential progress moving forward. As I as I mentioned, I
And any contract obligations we'd have?
Exactly. Yes, but we we can provide that within that context.
Yeah. Anything else? Brian, you got anything? Yeah. I have nothing else. Another motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Jeff second, Brian second. All in favor?
Aye.
When we're leaving her folders, we're rubbing out her paperwork.